Good evening. I'd like to call to order this Board of Commissioners meeting on November 4th. Please join in the pleasurable audience. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus may pick up passes as you leave this evening and it will be valid for today only. Ethics reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda of the outcome which will have a direct substantial and readily identifiable impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote. We move to our consent agenda. Does anyone from the public have questions or comments about this evening's consent agenda? All right, Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Sarah, do we have anyone sign up for a public comment? All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak during public comment but did not sign up? All right, we will keep going. Avril, do you have a manager's update for us this evening?
Yes, Chair. I do have two quick items. As Buncombe County continues to recover from tropical storm Helene and focus on mitigating future emergencies, a new position would help oversee these efforts. Earlier this month, the Board of County Commissioners officially established a Helene Recovery Office. The Helene Recovery Office would primarily be funded using external funding like CDBG, DR, and FEMA public assistance. To lead these efforts, Kevin Madsen has been named as the county's first Helene Recovery Officer. Kevin is no stranger to emergency services and disaster recovery. I actually met Kevin in the aftermath of Hurricane Florence in 2018 in New Hanover County. Kevin was also deployed to assist us here in the aftermath of Helene. He was with us in our Emergency Operations Center, helping to guide through the complexities of Helene. With multiple incident command situations under his belt, experience running comprehensive emergency response programs for universities and more, Kevin's unique background has him ready to hit the ground running. His first official day was yesterday, November the 3rd, and he came back for a second day. Kevin continues to come to us after most recently serving Madison and Yancey Counties via the FEMA Community Liaison Program. His career began in North Texas, responding to Hurricane Katrina and Rita. He led the city of Colorado Springs Office of Emergency Management, where he led mitigation efforts from the Waldo Canyon Fire. And he's also served in numerous North Carolina positions along the coast and as Johnston County Emergency Manager Division Chief, where he managed response and recovery to Hurricane Matthew, which impacted Johnston County in 2016. If you would join me, please, and welcome Kevin Madsen to the Buncombe County team.
Kevin?
Thank you, Avril. It's a pleasure to be here and to work with such an impressive team at the county and I look forward to continuing the hard work that everyone's invested so far.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. We're excited to have you back for a second day and hope that you'll return day after day.
Looking positive so far.
We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
And look forward to getting to know you.
And my second item this afternoon is, as you know, we've stood up some food donations from the government shutdown. I'm looking for... There he is. Nathan. I didn't see him. So Nathan Green, we tapped him to be your Incident Management Team Leader, Commander, and he's going to give us a quick update on our efforts so far in the federal government shutdown and our response to the SNAP pause.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for having us. My name's Nathan Green and I'm serving as the Incident Commander for the federal shutdown response. Today, I want to walk you through the response efforts and actions we've taken so far and how we're supporting our residents and community partners during this period of service disruption. On this slide, we'll give you an overview and a timeline of the actions we've taken so far. We moved quickly to activate an Incident Management Team and organize our operations. We started with coordinated messaging, planning, and partner engagement, then stood up the call center, coordinated food access support, and opened donation sites and activated a volunteer support program within. Our focus has been early action, clear communication, and making sure critical services and support remain accessible for families who may be affected by the shutdown. This slide highlights the cascading impacts or potential downstream effects of the shutdown's uncertainty. While the shutdown is federal, the effects are local. We're seeing increased stress on food access systems, particularly SNAP and our distribution models. As federal nutrition programs face delays, community demand rises, and our residents and local nonprofits feel that pressure first. Our role here is to anticipate those impacts and coordinate the resources.
Kevin, can you go back to that slide real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Backward. I just want to point out some of the others that we have not been talking about here going forward. But the app is coming, and if you would talk a little bit about... Normally, we would do this in January, but it's just going to be in November. So there's going to be some gaps in other services as well, so I just wanted to point those out. So the one particularly that stands out is that low-income energy assistance program. So we only get one payment, one time, in November. Normally, it opens for the general public in January, it's the allegedly first, and then the general public in January, but that right now has no fun in beyond November as well. And heating season and coal season is coming, so that would be a need for us.
Thank you.
So this slide shows the departments engaged in our response. We brought together a team from across Buncombe County departments to include HHS, CAPE, Emergency Services, Human Resources, Strategy and Innovation, Economic Development, Libraries, the Register of Deeds, General Services, and Information Technology. These departments are working together under the ICS structure to support residents maintain county operations throughout the shutdown period. This slide reflects our organizational structure, and as you can see, as we've gone through the week, it's grown quite a bit. By using the Incident Command Structure such as this, it ensures that our organization has clear communications and shared situational awareness as needs evolve. Our key objectives are to ensure continuity of county services, provide consistent messaging, and manage any surge in demand. We continue to process SNAP applications and contacting recipients directly by text, phone, and phone with updates. Community Engagement Markets remain in place to offer food at no cost across the county. We've increased staffing to support higher call volume and opened donation sites across the county facilities. Those county facilities include all 12 libraries, HHS, and the Register of Deeds. We've convened the Feeding Collaborative, we reconvened the Feeding Collaborative that we had during Helene and updated our volunteer hour program so county employees can support community food relief efforts. We're working closely with 16 organizations through the Feeding Collaborative to assess the needs and align food support efforts. Man of Food Bank is coordinating donations through its distribution network, and we've built a referral pathway through the One Buncombe Call Center so residents can be connected directly to food resources in real time. Our October 30th press conference reached 3.1 million impressions, showing strong community need for clear information. We're managing about 105 calls a day across the One Buncombe and Economic Services Call Centers. Donation sites are open at the 12 libraries, including Register of Deeds and HHS, and we're collecting about 2,300 pounds of food a day. That is the equivalent of about 1,925 meals. 16 partners engaged through the Feeding Collaborative to align logistics and capacity. County employees are able to use their volunteer hours to help with food distribution and relief efforts. These actions have ensured timely support for our community and strong coordination with our partners. Families can find the Community Engagement Market schedule online, drop off food donations at county libraries, Health and Human Services, and the Register of Deeds, or call the One Buncombe Hotline for support and information. And there you see the website they can go to to get that information. We'll continue to monitor the needs, coordinate with our partners, and keep the community informed as this develops.
And Commissioners, just today, the city also added four more distribution sites utilizing the community centers. So there's four more sites that has come online. And our staff has been working with their staff to make sure the messaging is clear and everybody knows those four sites are now added for distribution. I do want to point out the 105 calls per day is a growth for us, so we have actually now redeployed staff to help augment that so folks can get an answer and they don't have to wait online. So just like Helene, we've redeployed staff one more time to answer this call as well. So we continue to answer the call for our communities while still maintaining our regular core services. So I just wanted to point out and thank staff for stepping into this role, something that they would never have thought because our job is not food distribution or our job is not food delivery. But knowing that our community needed them, they stepped in and did that work. So I want to say thank you to staff and thanks for the Board, for y'all's leadership and working with us through the press conference and everything y'all did last week as well. Thank you to Nathan for really being tapped to be an Incident Commander and stepping in. The CAPE team has been marvelous. We're getting all the messages out. So we've been working at it, and I just want to say thank you to the team.
Thank you. And I, on behalf of the Commissioners, want to echo that same message to you, Nathan. Thank you for stepping up to the CAPE team and for every single staff person who has had to yet again take on new and unusual duties during this crisis. We really do appreciate you and appreciate the coordination to ensuring that residents across Buncombe County have food on their dinner tables. We appreciate you all.
Thank you, and I can't say enough about the support and what this team's accomplished in just a week's amount of time.
Thank you.
End of report, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right, we have a FY '25 fourth quarter financial update, and Melissa Moore is joining us with additional information. Good evening, Melissa.
Good evening. So this evening's presentation will be the fourth quarter, so it'll represent the entire fiscal year for 2025. And it is un-audited, so instead of waiting all the way until our audit is completely final, I wanted to bring you updated information. That would not be my presentation. But just keep in mind that as we get final entries back from the audit firm, that there is an opportunity to see some of these final closing entries to change the amounts here. So as we wait for the presentation to come up, just to remind you, the quarterly presentations cover our major operating funds for General Fund and Solid Waste. And we also cover our capital and project fund as well as the investment update. I also add to the report for the fourth quarter to include fund balance as well as debt, to have just that annual overview at the snapshot in time where it closed the fiscal year. Thanks for your patience, everyone.
Anyone know any good jokes?
There we go. All right, to start, we will look at our General Fund revenue. So as we look at the revenue, the amended budget is $483.8 million compared to the year-to-date actuals of $466.2. As we look at that, the amended budget included $14.8 million in fund balance. So without that fund balance, it would have been $469 million in revenue just to have a more comparison of where the actual organic revenues came in. As we look and compare the actual performance of each one of these revenue types, you'll see as anticipated through the uncertainties of the impacts to our revenues from the year of Helene, we did see the reduction materialize as projected in our ad valorem taxes, a reduction of over $3 million, $3.1 million, as well as the reduction of revenues for our sales tax, fell short of $1.2 million. And we saw increased revenues in intergovernmental as well as sales, intergovernmental revenues reflecting grant funds from the state to fund primarily D-Snap, which was your disaster SNAP benefits that were administered and paid for the administration of that out of the General Fund, and therefore those funds were brought in to reflect as revenue. Additional revenue under intergovernmental would be for Medicaid expansion as well as Medicaid Homehold Harmless Provisions. You see an increased revenue under your sales and service by about $700,000. Some of this was for additional demand to municipalities for stormwater management due to Helene as well as some additional ambulance revenues. So we look at our expenditures for FY '25. Compared to your annual budget of $483.8, the year-to-date actuals ended at $464.5. This does reflect the cost reduction event that we did that was approved by the Board for $17, over $17 million. But $17.6 was the cost reduction initiative to set aside funds for Helene. But we had additional cost savings, so the additional spend reduction realized from the General Fund was a total of $19.3 million. The next slide looks at expenditures by category, so you can see how they fall out between the categories between salaries and operating expenditures. Next, we'll look at fund balance. So our fund balance policies address available fund balance as well as unassigned fund balance. So keep in mind, fund balance is an accounting term. It's the difference between your assets and your liabilities. And so we have a total fund balance that is $117.5. And fund balance is made up of five categories. So the two categories that are reflected here on this slide are part of the categories that the Board does have control over. And the available fund balance is made up of three of the five categories of fund balance, which would be made up of committed, assigned, and unassigned. And our fund balance policy for available fund balance is to have a minimum of 15%. So the fund balance at the end of the fiscal year at $68.1 million falls short of that fund balance policy at 14.6%. And it doesn't fall below AAA credit rating standards. It's just by chance that the unassigned fund balance is also the same number. When you look at the three categories, there was zero under committed, there was only $7,000 under unassigned. So when you get to, I'm sorry, only $7,000 under the assigned category, and then unassigned still at $68 million. So the only difference between the two categories here was the $7,000 in the assigned category. So the unassigned fund balance, where this triggers finance policy, is if unassigned reaches 20%, anything exceeding 20% would be transferred to capital reserve. And with it being at 14.6%, it didn't trigger any type of transfer. The footnote here, $9.8 million of restricted fund balance under one of the five, the two categories of fund balance that we don't have control over. But that fund balance was set aside to stabilize our grant funding related to the Helene Grant Fund. So by state statute, we have to set aside those funds to cover that negative balance in our Helene Fund. Looking at our solid waste fund. At an amended budget of $18.9 million, which included $4.4 million of appropriated fund balance, we ended the year at actual revenue of $16.5 million. We saw an increase in our sales and service due to debris removal from Helene. We saw an increased revenue under the other revenue. These are bond proceeds that were to fund the solid waste compactor. Looking at your expenditures, expenditures ended year-to-date at $15.1 million. You saw some lower amounts coming on in actuals under your salaries and benefits as well as some lower expenditures under your operating. Looking at our capital projects, this is a life-to-date where your capital projects cover multiple years. It's your life-to-date budget of $146.5 million. You'll see the different shades and labeling of which year those projects were anticipated and projected to spend. You'll see FY '26, our current fiscal year, considerably larger than the prior year in our projections, life-to-date actuals of $60 million. Year-to-date for FY '25, we're at $8.1 million compared to the prior year-to-date of $11. So for the current fiscal year, with a projected $50 million in projects, some of the large projects, they can also be found on the Supporting Report in Appendix C. It lists all of the active projects. But those include projects such as your courthouse renovation, EMS East Base, our Fleet and General Services building, and storage roofing, 911 backup center. So quite a bit of activity this fiscal year, in FY '26, our current fiscal year, on our capital projects. So now looking at our debt overview. So total debt of principal outstanding at the end of the fiscal year is $366.2 million. This chart reflects that. That is not all General Fund debt or county debt. 58% of the outstanding balance, or $213 million of that, is for our schools. So that would be Asheville City Schools, Buncombe County Schools, as well as AV Tech. We look at our policy ratios. We look at, the first policy metric is the debt, the direct debt to our assessed evaluation. Where the state allows an 8% for you to issue debt up to 8% of your total taxable valuation. Our policy is more restrictive and holds a maximum of 3%, where the current outstanding debt is at 0.67%. So we look at our debt payout ratio. This is the speed at which the outstanding debt is amortized. We strive for a 10-year payout ratio of 65% or greater. The minimum is set at 55%. And we exceed that. We're sitting at 82.2%. For a direct debt service to governmental ratio to the percent, to our expenditures, a max of 18%, we're well below that at 8.5%. A variable rate debt, meaning the interest rate would not be set, it could fluctuate, we don't have any of that debt outstanding. So shifting to an overview of our investment portfolio. The individual columns here represent different institution and types of investments. Where the first three columns are different local government investment pools. You can see in the last line of that top table of the amount that we had invested or deposited with each one of those firms. And the two lines above that are the year-to-date income for interest earnings from each one of those types of investments that we have. Our total cash and investments on our balance sheet at $273.9. The amount that's considered invested would be $244 or 89.4% as of the end of the reporting period, which would be the last day of the fiscal year. So as we look at the individual investments and where the different types of investments are between US Treasuries and CDs, money markets, that chart there shows you the amount in each and what percent of our total portfolio, where those stand. The table over to the right reflects the interest earnings. So you'll see in the NCIP and those local government investment pools, as of the end of the year, all of those were performing and earning interest on our invested funds exceeding 4%. As you know, as most of y'all are probably aware, the Fed's lowering the interest rate another 25 basis points. So we will start seeing those rates gradually go down because they do track to that fund rate. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Melissa. Are there questions?
I have one question, Melissa. Thank you for this information. Can you elaborate on the fund balance, that part? Because I think you said that we had to stabilize the grant funding related to Helene. And we did get, I think it was three of the no-interest loans from the state. And so I know part of our hope had been that that would help address some of that cash flow in and out with the Helene funding.
Yes, it did. So basically, the expenditure, the actual expenditures out of the grant fund exceeded the amount that we received from the state loans. So you still had a negative balance in your Helene Grant Fund. And in the restricted fund balance, the majority of that, the restricted fund balance sits at just under $49 million with stabilization by state statute. So there is a definition in state statute of how you calculate that. And any of these things such as the negative balances, liabilities... And any of these things, such as the negative balances, liabilities, things like that, it is required by state statute. What it does is it reduces the risk and exposure to financial default. And so the state, being ultra-conservative, has the state statute. And so the, the, the largest line item that's above, so you took total fund balance bu- bucket, if you will, of seventeen, one hundred and seventeen million. And then you go through your non-spendable, which is just under four hundred thousand, and then you get to your restricted. And out of that restricted budget bucket, excuse me, the majority of that forty-one million is under states, stabilization by state statute. And so part of that nine point eight million is put in, is under that, represented under that, as well as obviously a lot of other things that go into that calculation. Does that help? It's really, it's kind of complicated, but I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Melissa, based on what we have, even though it's un-audited, do you think our, will our bond rating change?
That's a, that's a hard question. The last rating that we received after the storm was because of the storm, they come back, re-rate you and determine, they upheld our rating at AAA, but they switched us to a negative outlook. Some of the things they indicated that would lead to a downgrade was fund balance. And that was one of the things that they do track. I will do my best to show them the calculation that the fund balance available and how, how it calculates out is heavily impacted by that state stabilization ratio. And the fact that part of that nine point eight million that's in there is not dependent on our funding sources, that is dependent on federal funding sources that are already obligated to us. I think that continues to justify the lack of risk that we have, and also further supports our financial stability. And that we're not overspending, we didn't erode, so the, the reserves to, to the point to go below. So I will do my best to defend it with those, those facts, and, and hopefully, hopefully that will get us to, to maintain that AAA credit rating.
And I know this kind of goes without saying, but along the lines of what Commissioner White says raised, as you see touchpoints for us to continue to preserve our AAA bond rating, or as we're having conversations about what our philosophy is going to be around fund balance, and people talking about this as an abstract, please knock us on the head and remind us of this conversation and exactly what this means, because the negative outlook part is not great, right? It's not something that anyone individually did, but that's something we need to keep in the back of our minds moving forward, since we do need to protect that, since that does set the stage for all the borrowing that we're doing, for all of these great projects that we've heard about today, both at briefing and will continue to hear about throughout our meeting.
Any other questions for Melissa? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do not have any public hearings or old news or business, so we'll move into new business. And our first item is a budget amendment to establish two conservation easements, and Ariel Zipe is joining us with more information.
Alrighty, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So this request tonight is to establish two conservation easement projects that are recommended to the Commissioners by the Buncombe County Land Conservation Advisory Board. We're proposing that these two projects are funded using the open space bond, as well as our annual fiscal year twenty-six conservation easement funding from the Special Programs Fund. So today, we have two representatives from Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy, a local land trust serving Buncombe County and other counties in western North Carolina, here to present on these two conservation easement requests. So we have Michelle Pelasey, who is the Land Protection Director for Southern App, as well as Jess Laggas, who's the Farmland Protection Director. So I will go ahead and hand it off to Michelle to get us started on the Haw Creek Headwaters project.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your attention to these projects. So the Haw Creek Headwaters property is a sixty-three acre tract in the upper elevations of Haw Creek in Buncombe County. It lays adjacent to the Blue Ridge Parkway and adjacent to the Mountains to Sea Trail. So in doing this conservation easement, we are protecting, I'm going to just sort of run through the conservation values. And so the scenic viewshed protection is one of the primary conservation values that this conservation easement will be protecting. It is highly visible from the Blue Ridge, sorry, from the Haw Creek Valley overlook on the Mountains to Sea Trail. It is essentially what you are looking at when you sit at that Lunch Rock. And it is also visible from the Blue Ridge Parkway Haw Creek Valley overlook. And it's also highly visible from the city's Charlie Bowman Park in, that's within Haw Creek. This also contains, the property also contains hiking trails that are very frequently used by the local community. And the owner wants those hiking trails to continue to be used. There is a connection from the property to the Mountains to Sea Trail, and as well, it will become part of Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy's outings program with ability for us to lead hikes on the property and to the various viewpoints that look onto the property. In this, this map, you can see, basically, it's a visibility map from the Blue Ridge Parkway. The darker the orange, the more visible it is. So this is basically a, let me see, I don't know if I have a pointer. Yeah. But you can see, the property is basically a long tract of land with the Blue Ridge Parkway being on the east side, and the entire property, almost the entire property is highly visible from the Parkway. As far as natural area protection, Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy has completed some strategic planning, and we have created priority zones within the focus areas where we work. And this one is located within our Blue Ridge Parkway to Left Fork and North Fork priority zone. It also lays within the Audubon Society's Bull Creek Important Bird Area. It has slightly above-average climate resilience through the Nature Conservancy's climate planning model. It is a wildlife corridor that's adjacent to a ridge line, so we do try to prioritize these high-elevation ridge lines that are important for wildlife movement. And another one of the really important conservation values is present, preventing development on steep slopes. And in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene, I think we all now see much more clearly how important it is to prevent development on steep slopes that can impact, you know, the residents of our community in a variety of ways. The property also contains segments of six different streams that flow through the property, some of which originate as headwater streams onsite, and some of which, some of which originate above the property. So we also would be preventing negative stormwater runoff to the residential communities below by preventing development on this property. And I will say, on this map, this aerial map that you're looking at, there are two boxes that are shown in an orange crosshatch. So the, the landowner wishes to sell this tract of land, but they want it to be protected with a conservation easement before they sell it. They want to reserve one home site on the property. Really, it's generally preferred for a conservation easement to allow some sort of use for a future owner. So we're, we're basically contemplating one home site, and these are the two possible locations. And we're still evaluating how to site a home that would minimize its viewshed impacts as well as steep slope development impacts. So the conservation easement will have some guardrails to protect against that. And also, the vegetated riparian buffers along those streams are, you know, will be protected. So as far as the eligibility criteria for the Buncombe County Bond Funds, this contains significant environmental and scenic importance, significant recreation opportunities, not just for the hiking onsite, but to preserve the view and user experience for people hiking the Mountains to Sea Trail and visiting the Blue Ridge Parkway. Water quality and open space benefits. And it is time-sensitive because the owners who purchased this property specifically to prevent its development now wish to sell the land, and they want to protect it before they sell it. So the owners are generously willing to do a bargain sale of a conservation easement for this land. We have estimated that the full market value of the conservation easement might be around six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. That's a conservative estimate. It could be much higher than that. We have negotiated a purchase price of four hundred thousand dollars, and we have sought private grant to cover half of that purchase price, and we're asking the county to contribute the other two hundred thousand dollars. In addition to the bargain purchase price, we are requesting fifty-four thousand dollars to cover the allowable transaction costs. As Ariel said, the Land Conservation Advisory Board has reviewed and, and recommended this. So at a conservative estimate, this, the county's investment would be about thirty-three percent of the project budget. If our estimate of value of the land is a little bit low, then it would be considerably higher. This picture shows a view of the, looking at the property from the Mountains to Sea Trail, what people call Lunch Rock, which is the Haw Creek overlook. This is another photo of the property from the Haw Creek Valley overlook on the Blue Ridge Parkway. And the property is basically sort of central, basically behind the sign and that vegetation that's immediately behind the sign is, you know, runs along that ridge line there. So before we get into the next project, does anybody have any questions about this?
Michelle, one, one quick question. Thank you for this. I'm just curious, so you mentioned there's trail access currently. Is that access from the Mountains to Sea Trail? Or is there a separate access to those trails? Because it's, it's, this is one of our most visited and, one of those tourists and locals visit this, this destination a lot, so I'm just curious how they get access to those trails.
Right. The, the primary access is through the Haw Creek community. You can get to the Blue Ridge Parkway and the Mountains to Sea Trail from the property. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Learn the tech. Okay. I'm so excited to talk to you this evening about Warren Wilson College. This is a project that you all have already voted to support transaction costs for. So it was originally contemplated that we would be coming back for a bond fund, so this is not new, but a repeat. So we closed in September on a one hundred and ninety acre, fully open to the public purchase from Warren Wilson College on what we are now calling the Bull Creek Preserve. SHC owns that and is in joint management with the college. But the originally contemplated conservation here is six hundred acres of bargain-sold conservation easements in four parts. So there are actually four separate conservation easements that we'll be doing. I've submitted no less than twenty grants for this project. We've received funding from our federal funding partners at NRCS, from our state agency, the Ag Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund, from this commission for transaction costs, from private philanthropists, and a major donation from the college itself in land value donation for which they can't seek any tax benefit as a nonprofit. So the funding concept is robust here and complicated, but unfortunately, the state trust fund only had funds enough to support two of these conservation easements, so we are requesting a little bit more from the bond. But as contemplated, it's sort of the final leg of the funding that we're looking for. So we've exhausted all of our other funding sources before coming to this board for approval. So it joins protected land, not only at the Bull Creek Preserve, which closed in September, but also Owen Park is only one small parcel removed. And the Owen Park Trail System connects to the Warren Wilson Trail System, which I believe this commission has also supported with open space bond funds for rebuilding the River Trail that's kind of beloved in the community. So SHC has done, Michelle mentioned many of the conservation values that we look at on tracts, which I won't relist here, but we combine all of those in a model that helps us prioritize land protection. Warren Wilson is the only project that I've ever seen that qualifies both as a model priority in our mountain lands protection, as well as our farmland protection. And those have pretty drastically different conservation values. Let's see, there are sixty-nine percent important soils comprising these properties. The views here and the public recreation benefits are well-known and beloved in the community. And the college itself considers itself a living laboratory, educating our next generation of farmers and foresters. Let's see, so all of these easements will have agriculture and commercial timber rights, and will contain buildable areas within them. So in this slide, you can see the four separate easement areas. The white parcel off to the left is now the Bull Creek Preserve, but the white lines indicate the county tax parcel for the entire college tract. The smaller circles interior delineate those interior building envelopes, and so there is one residence allowed per parcel, per easement parcel, and three agricultural farmstead areas where the college can continue to develop agricultural infrastructure. I won't read to you all of the bullet points of significance and eligibility criteria, but suffice to say, this project takes a lot of boxes. And again, this easement, the, the funding structure here is very complex, but you'll see, we've secured all of the funds besides this final eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand eighty-four dollar request to the bond. And again, that is supporting four separate easements and six hundred acres in striking distance of Asheville. Let's see, and I think that's all I need to say about this slide. This is an aerial image of the, of Warren Wilson Road dropping in. The mountain peak that you can see there in the center is part of Jones Mountain, that's actually part of the easements. And all of the bottom lands that you can see in that image are part of the easements as well. Is this you? Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the Warren Wilson project? Awesome. All right. So in, in addition to these two projects, I just, I want to take a moment to do a brief update on where we are with our open space bond funds. So here's the breakdown from what has been allocated and what we currently are anticipating in terms of requests coming up. So please note that tonight's request that Michelle and Jess just presented is highlighted on the screen, and, and it was previously in the anticipated future conservation easement request, but we broke it out, so you can see that we still do anticipate about one point four coming back for conservation easement funding from the bond. So tonight's request is that one point one. And so our ask tonight is to approve these two projects and the funding requested, so that they're both would be open space bond fund, funded projects, as well as the transaction costs coming from our annual easement funding. And let us know if you have any questions.
Are there any further questions?
Well, I do just want to share something. So thank you for both of these projects, and I'm just super excited about the Warren Wilson project. And thank you for all the due diligence around leveraging all that funding to bring in for that project, because that's, that's a testament to the importance of this project, is, is the work you've done on that and being able to leverage all those funds. And it's, I was excited about this project well before Helene, as you know, but after Helene and what we've been through for the Swinawa community, it has an even more special place that we're able to do this important work there within that community and be able to benefit the greater community, as well as all the wonderful work that Warren Wilson does around our ag community as well. So thank you very much. And I'm happy to make the motion.
Say.
Great. Any further questions or discussion? All right. All in favor to approve 1.1 million in easement funds, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
All right, our second item of new business is our 2030 strategic plan adoption and Rafael Baptista from Strategy Innovation is joining us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening Commissioners. Excited to be here. We were supposed to be doing this around this time back in 2024, but we had to hit pause and repivot. So, an exciting day for sure for all of us today. As a reminder, we started this process really back in the spring of 2024. We were near the finish line. We were, I think, one board meeting away from adoption when Tropical Storm Helene hit. And when it hit, we paused, we pivoted to responding and recovering from Helene, and then we pivoted back to thinking about strategic plan from the lens of a community recovery. Really started this process back in earnest, back in April. The strategic plan before you today was written by a lot of folks. We had over 100 subject matter experts across all county departments. We had a lot of feedback from subject matter experts and our local partners and our state partners. Y'all played a very significant role in developing the strategic plan. We met with you all many times. We also had robust community engagement. Speaking of community engagement, we did three rounds of community engagement for this plan. The first round was back in spring of 2024. We did 19 in-person events and an online survey with over 1,000 responses. We did our second round back in the spring. With the second round, we started doing this community engagement in partnership with the Helene Recovery Plan, which Rachel Sawyer talked to you all about earlier today. With that one, we did 28 in-person events and an online survey. And just the strategic plan portion of it received over 2,600 responses. And then we did our third round earlier this fall with an online survey. On the strategic plan side, we received feedback from about 41 different participants. This strategic plan is a robust and ambitious, yet attainable and actionable strategic plan that represents seven focus areas, six of them are community-facing, with 17 objectives and 58 goals. In terms of next steps, we will be, begin updating the strategic plan dashboard and website so the public can keep track of our progress on the 2030 strategic plan. We're finalizing departmental business plans right now to support the implementation of the 2030 strategic plan. We will commence biannual strategic plan updates to you all in calendar year 2026 and will ensure that at fiscal year '27 and future budget years, the development of those budgets are driven by and informed by the 2030 strategic plan and that work is already underway with our budget department. So our ask today is that you adopt the focus areas, objectives, and goals in the 2030 Buncombe County Strategic Plan on effective date of January 1st, 2026.
Are there any questions for Rafael?
I have a statement.
Yes, go ahead.
So Chair, I did prepare it, so, Chair colleagues, Chair colleagues and community, I appreciate the thoughtful work behind the strategic plan 2030 and the intention to build a stronger, more resilient Buncombe County. The goals outlined are meaningful and relevant. For this reason, I will vote in support tonight. But let the record reflect, dozens of residents submitted written comments during this process, raising deeply personal and urgent concerns about homelessness, mental health, elder care, food access, and disaster recovery. Despite the clarity and consistency of this public feedback, the final plan includes no measurable changes from the draft released before public input was received. While I understand a separate recovery plan is forthcoming, these issues are not peripheral. They are structural and they deserve to be treated as such. Feedback can't just be a checkbox. It must shape the work. So while I support the plan's direction, I will continue to advocate for the voices that's not heard in this plan. Thank you. I see you Buncombe County.
Are there other comments or questions for Rafael? If not, do we have a motion to approve the focus areas, objectives, and goals in the 2030 strategic plan?
A motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Wells. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rafael, many thanks to you and your team, to all the county staff that has been involved in this very long process, extended process to get us to tonight's vote to approve these and, and to our community as well, for those who did participate in a myriad of town halls and surveys, bringing that draft back to the Board of Commissioners and then going back out to the community again. We appreciate everyone's continued diligence in ensuring that we worked toward getting this right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, our next item is to reappoint Jennifer Pike as our tax collector and she is joining us with some additional information. Good evening Jennifer.
Good evening Chair Edwards, members of the board. Thank you for, for having me this evening. So North Carolina General Statute 105-349 requires the governing body of each county to appoint a tax collector to serve for a term determined by the appointing body. That statute does not specify a term limit. I was appointed tax collector in 2017, November of 2017, reappointed in November 2021. So I am with you this evening to request a reappointment of a five-year term to end November of 2030. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the reappointment.
Are there questions for Jennifer? You want to say something, I will. Commissioner, right sides.
Before, before we do that, just to fix it online, in the third paragraph that would actually make it go into effect for the resolution, it says four and then in parentheses it says five. Can we amend that to make sure it shows the right term?
That paragraph, when you come down, yeah, when you come down to the be resolved, it says the five down there. I was looking at the same thing as well. It referenced our previous four-year term.
Jennifer Pike is appointed to serve a term of four, in parentheses, five years running through 2030.
I don't, I don't see that. The one I'm looking at.
I see it.
Oh, oh, because I'm like.
You will get that fixed.
Okay. Thank you Vice Chair Moore.
Okay.
Should be five. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. I see it now. All right, with that change made.
I move that we reappoint Jennifer.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations Jennifer. We appreciate your service to Buncombe County and your extraordinary tax collection rate, even in the most challenging times in Buncombe County. Your leadership in, of your team is noticed and impressed and we appreciate you.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to serve the community.
Thank you.
Thanks Jennifer.
Our next item is a resolution to award a contract for the Buncombe County Sports Park Field Updates. And Allison Danes, our Parks and Rec Director, is providing us some background information on that. Good evening Allison.
Good evening Madam Chair. Commissioners, I am very excited to be here with you today to talk about the Buncombe County Sports Park, ANCA Recreation Destination Phase II. I have brought this item to you before, so some of these should be repeats. Phase II really is truly focused on Buncombe County as a premier sports park and family destination and continue to look to make that park the best that it can possibly be for our community. We're really looking to improve the use of the site and navigation, expand the way that we navigate around that area, as well as improving drainage grading and having a plan for attendees who are there to watch the activities. Previously, we have already turfed and lighted fields one, two, and eight, which are at the top right-hand side of that picture that you're seeing. And I am here today to talk about turfing and lighting fields three, four, and five, which is the area that you see circled there on the picture. This will continue to increase playability, especially in a time when our community so desperately needs turf fields for playing. We're looking to expand up to 800 hours a year and it'll help decrease injuries to people that are playing, having these fields come back to us. I want to remind everyone, in 2023, the ANCA Destin, the Buncombe County applied for TPDF funding and received a grant award for Phase II in the amount of $4,54,415. This project was to focus on providing the artificial turf and lighting for the fields that I've just mentioned, as well as an accessible walkway installation of an inclusive playground, renovation, central restroom, and including a park rest, a park office and contact station, as well as new shelter with lighting. Our approach to this has been two-faced. We are bringing, I'm bringing you first of all, the contract for the lighting in the fields. And this is a contract that we have been working with CDC Designs on to do all of our preliminary design that has been completed. And we are looking at creating another project for the playground section along with the shelter, as well as the renovation of that office and contact station. So, what we did was we advertised, we did an RFP for construction of the turf and lighted fields, as well as the accessible walking path. We had a response from AstroTurf LLC as the lowest responsive bidder with a contract I am here today to ask you for a motion to approve the contract in the amount of $3,3856,425. Think I said that wrong the first time, didn't I? That's okay. So, with AstroTurf for the construction of the turfed and lighted fields at the Buncombe County Sports Park.
Are there any questions for Allison?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the $3.8 million contract with AstroTurf.
Second.
Commissioner Sloan, suggested by Commissioner Wells. Any addition, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, budget amendment is approved. Thank you Allison.
Great, thank you. I think I'm coming back to you.
Oh, and she's staying with us for our next item, the Charles Owen Park Contract.
Yes. I am extremely excited to be here tonight to talk with you about Owen Park and the status of where we are with this project. So, we have gone through the process of looking at, we're going to look at how to rebuild and the approach that we're taking and the steps that we're taking to bring Owen Park back online. And then I'm, at the end, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve a contract to start to move that project forward. By now, unfortunately, many of us have seen the before and after pictures in which Owen Park was completely devastated. Here you see the before and after, where we had two ponds with a walking path and the Swanonoa River came fully into the park and has moved by more than 45 feet into the park. It was catastrophic damage that truly devastated Swanonoa, as well as our department and all of the residents. Broke through its banks and from the very beginning, Buncombe County has prioritized this park for rebuild. We are looking at a two-phase approach. Phase one in the rebuilding includes the engineering. The engineering is where we'll look to design and stabilize the riverbanks and will create a more resilient park. There are several processes of that through civil engineering, environmental assessment, and sustainability and resilience, as well as accessibility. We'll also get into design development, where we'll be scoping out the full project. We'll be having extensive opportunities for community outreach to talk about what the residents would like to see from this new park as we bring it online. We'll get into conceptual designs and ultimately what we call schematic designs, where we refine what it is that we heard and put it onto paper for the reality of what can be rebuilt in this area. Phase two of the project will include the actual construction documents. That's when we move forward with having technical drawings. We get into our permitting. We look into getting our bids, contracting out. We go through that process and ultimately, we go into construction. We've been collaborating extensively, both internally and externally, to bring this project forward. Been working with the planning department, who's been spearheading the Swanonoa Small Area Plan and we will continue to work through that program with them. We've been working with Strategic Partnership Department on the potential of passive recreation land go-bonds, grant opportunities. Our CAPE team has been helping us with some targeted community outreach on this project already and we look forward to communication plan in the future. We'll be working with the Helene, the new Helene Recovery Office on the implementation of the project and continue working with our financing on funding strategies. Externally, funding has been discussed with FEMA for public assistance through Damage Inventory. The Friends of the Swanonoa, as well as the Swanonoa Grassroots Alliance have been two very key partners that we have been working with and in constant contact. Also, working with Warren Wilson College, the Swanonoa Community Council, and the Swanonoa Valley Lions Club. And we will continue to ensure that we move forward with this project, knowing that this is an identified project in our Buncombe County Helene Recovery Plan. We put out an RFQ for the engineering and design of this project for Phase One. It is extraordinary to report that we received 11 submittals. That just lets you know how important this project is and the complexity with which it has, that so many people are reaching out to be a part of this extremely, extremely valuable asset. Horshot is a Chicago-based design and engineering firm that was selected. They strive to, they strive to elevate public expectation by finding new ways to integrate landscape into the public dialogue and we're really looking forward to our partnership with them as they have two local firms that will be working in coordination with them. The service contract for this initial phase is $448,980. The contract will fully complete Phase One as presented, which will include cost estimates for the next phase and potential FEMA, potential funding through FEMA and public assistance. Our next step is to have a project kickoff, which will be expected to be completed by the end of August 2026. We'll develop a timeline at this point, as well as ensuring that the engineering and environmental assessment surveys are all completed. And we'll ensure that we are reaching out to community in coordination of what their needs and expectations are for this property. With that, I am requesting the motion to approve the contract with Horshot in the amount of $448,980 for the engineering and design of Owen Park.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Is there any, any discussion or conversations, questions?
I just, I want to say thank you so much to staff for prioritizing this and the community certainly is just, as you know, very excited to get moving on this project and, and thanks for all the work that all of you have already been doing to include them and keep them up to date on the process. And I'm very excited to see, see what the community's vision is going to be for Owen Park.
I just got a question. I didn't know if, perhaps it's a part of the Phase One process, but I didn't see the HMGP acronym up in that slide deck and I didn't know if the, the water component, the river component of this, this parcel, that was a good candidate for some sort of water slowing, water storage project.
Yeah, we're looking at, public assistance is going through, through this area. And so, we've been working with FEMA on the various options that we have. We're also talking about EWP. There's a section where there is a portion that can There's a section where there is a portion that can potentially be a viable use for those funds as well.
Okay.
As a reminder, you can't double dip from FEMA. So they're pointing us in the direction that would give us the biggest bang for what we need.
Okay, right. And so we even, we own the ponds or the former ponds. So it's a good candidate for FEMA PA because of that, right? Right, okay.
I was just going to applaud you again for the work you're doing to define grant sources as we move forward. But again, I think the level of community engagement around this is really going to pay dividends. It's such a beloved park, so all the work that we're doing to ensure that the future of this park is shaped by the community is really appreciated. So excited to see the progress. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, there being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is approved for the contract. Thank you so much, Allison. All right, our next item. We do not have board appointments. Do we have any board announcements or updates?
No one else has one. I'm happy to offer. Early Childhood has been in a series of really awesome projects happening right now. About two weeks ago, Rachel and I could correct me on the, or Sawyer could correct me on the date, but we began site visits, digging into what our community looked like after Helene. Early Childhood has certainly been something that's been a topic of discussion throughout our state and just figuring out what the impact is going to be on our community. So we're doing this in an effort to understand better what our providers need and what work needs to be taking place in our community. Today, we were able to put together a panel of experts, ranging from folks at the Department of Commerce to early childhood professionals who are experts in every walk of life you can imagine, coming together and just kind of had a chance for an hour and a half to pick their brains about what we could be doing, what's the highest and best use of our monies, and the fact that Buncombe County has been a leader in terms of early childhood investment for many years and how we continue to lead that charge. There's not really a roadmap for doing this particularly well in our state. So we're trying to set the example for that. And I think we made a good stride toward doing that by bringing in, I think we were lucky enough to mention Samantha Cole as a great example of someone who has a local and statewide tie to kind of bring that expertise and help us navigate our path forward. And just excited to have people involved, and people are getting excited from all across the county. So thank you to yourself and all the other commissioners who initially voted for it and my colleagues who served with me on that committee. We're doing some fun things.
Thank you very much. Any other updates? All right, our next briefing will be held on November 18th, beginning at 3:00 PM in the first floor conference room. Our next regular meeting will begin at 5:00 PM back here in chambers on November 18th. We recessed from our closed session, and we will go back into that closed session. And we will adjourn the meeting from there as we will not be taking any official actions in those meetings. Yes, Avril?
As a quick reminder, November 13th is also a budget retreat date.
Thank you. At 9:00 AM downstairs. All right, November 13th, 9:00 AM. All right, thank you. All right, with that, we are resuming closed session. Thanks to everyone for joining us. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.